And so we're helping every single citizen in Manatee County is going to have cleaner water because of this project. We also provide water wholesale to the city of Bradenton, Palmetto, other municipalities here in the county and even outside of the county. So everyone's going to be getting cleaner water. And you know, that's something that we can all get behind and be excited about is better water for our families to drink. You know, the vision for this commission is to have a wonderful place to live and to raise your family, to work, to play. And so part of that is the things that you don't necessarily see. Of course, it's fun to, you know, open a new playground or a park or, or, you know, re-nourish the beaches with fresh sand. That's so fun. Everyone sees it. But this is the work that goes on behind the scenes for every one of our taxpaying citizens to make sure they have clean water to drink on a daily basis. So that is part of the vision. And it's the work that might sometimes go unrewarded, but the commission's been stepping up and making this a priority and so has staff. So I'm really pleased with each thing that they're doing towards that. You know, the truth is, we can be very pleased with what we have here in Manatee County with our water treatment for our drinking water. Surrounding counties don't have something like this. We've got a lake here that we're able to draw water from for each of our citizens. And it's got state-of-the-art filtration to make sure it becomes clean to each of our taxpayers. So it really is exciting.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Manatee County Planning Commission for February 8th, 2024. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under the hand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone will please take a moment and silence your cell phones, please. Silence your cell phones. Thank you. Announcements, Ms. Greer, Ms. Schenk, any changes to the agenda this morning?
Um, yes, sir. Under announcements, we will be swearing in the new planning commissioner, plural, Mr. Esslinger and Ms. Onstad? Did I? Onstad, okay. And then also under advertised public hearings, presentations upon request, item number four, PDMU 2324 ZG Avid on Parkway. You have a revised general development plan and a revised specific approval letter included the inter-local agreement with Sarasota County and deleting a specific approval, number four, and a revised staff report to delete references to the mention of specific approval, all which have been attached and you should have in the new agenda. That's it.
Ms. Schenk?
No changes.
All right. First thing to do then is swearing in of our new planning commissioners, Mr. Jeff Esslinger and Ms. Monica Onstad.
All right, if you'll rise and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that you are qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that you will well and faithfully perform at all times the duties of the planning commission on which you are now about to enter? You do? All right, congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. The first thing we do in the morning is to see if there are any members of the public that want to speak for future agenda items. That's not for things on today's agenda, but if anyone wants to come forward and talk to the planning commission about something they would like to see in the future. So is there anyone that would like to come forward and address the planning commission on future agenda items? Anyone at all? All right, thank you. The next thing is advertised public hearings. And in advance of that, I believe we will have the swearing in. If you're even remotely thinking about speaking today, even if you might get the feeling and you're going to talk, then please stand up and get sworn in now, if you would, please.
Do you swear or affirm that the contractual statements and representations here about the future of the planning commission are truthful and honest?
I do.
All right. When you step in the morning, state your name and then be ready.
Thank you, Ms. Schenk. Number one and two, should we open them together and then take separate motions at the end?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Greer, would you please read items number one and two into the record?
Item number one, PDMU 9201 G R 19, University Lakes General Development Plan Amendment. Schroeder Manatee is the owner. It's quasi-judicial and we have Rosina Leider here for staff. It's approving an amendment to the official zoning atlas. And item number two is DR 22, Ordinance 2426, University Lakes DRI Amendment. Again, Schroeder Manatee Inc. is the owner. It's quasi-judicial and Rosina Leider is here for staff.
All right, thank you. Anything to introduce, Ms. Leider, or just go right to the applicant? Applicant? Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I'm Katie LaBarre with Stantec, here on behalf of Schroeder Manatee, to just go out with the amendment that we have for you for University Lakes DRI.
We just didn't turn the on button on. Again, I'm Katie LaBarre with Stantec, here on behalf of the applicant, Schroeder Manatee Inc. As, as Ms. Greer said, we have two items before you today, DRI amendment and amendment to the development order, as well as zoning ordinance amendment and an amendment to the general development plan. This is a pretty straightforward application, and so I'm just going to run through some of the details and then happy to take any questions you might have. The proposal before you today is to add 150 beds to the existing Lakewood Ranch Medical Center. We will be updating the development order conditions to be consistent with previous approvals that have been granted, and then other cleanup items, which is a standard procedure for such large projects. With the general development plan, there are a few other details. As, as many of you know, the development order is the, the document that really oversees the regional impacts, addressing the bigger issues between local government that might impact other governments. The general development plan is truly that development plan focused on compliance with the land development regulations. And so it's the, it's the implementing document effectively. And so with the general development plan amendment, we propose to increase the entitlements on parcel 14. So we're very specific about where those entitlements are being added. Again, for the 150 beds for the hospital. We're also clarifying that 10-story maximum height will apply to the hospital. It was a little bit ambiguous previously, and we wanted to make sure that that was clear. That building height limitation is consistent with other parts of town center and just makes sense for the hospital. We're also revising land condition Q9 regarding floor area ratio, and we're amending that language to make sure that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so the way that it currently reads before this amendment, it was just a little bit confusing as to how one would apply. And so with this modification, it's much clearer to staff as to how, how it would be applied on a project-by-project basis. And then we propose to add a note to the land use schedule that just clarifies the allocation of units. And then again, other items as necessary, just again, for cleanup and clarification. And so this is, for the most part, a cleanup document. But again, the big change is adding the 150 beds to Lakewood Ranch Medical Center, which is necessary to support the continuing growth of, of this region of the county. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and appreciate the opportunity to present to you today.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time on either item number one or number two? No questions from planning commissioners? Thank you. We will open public comment area. Is there any common time, is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public to speak for or against item number one or item number two? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. And move to staff closing comments.
Good morning, Rosina Leider, staff. And it has been sworn, I agree with all the findings that the applicant explained, and we don't have any additional comments unless you have questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? All right, thank you. Applicant closing comments? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve and a second. We may vote now. Now, this is on item number one, by the way, just to clarify, I'm sorry. This is, we'll take separate motions on item number one. So we have a motion to approve on item number one and a second. We can vote on item number one. Motion passes unanimously on item number one. Chair, entertain a motion on item number two. We have a motion and a second. We may go and vote for item number two. Motion passes unanimously on item number two. Thank you. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman, you did skip over approval of the minutes for January 26th. I'm not sure if you wanted to do that.
Oh, there they are. I didn't see them. I apologize. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 26th, 2024. Thank you, Ms. Greer, for reminding me. The computer is waiting. We'll do it verbally. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of January? Oh, there we go. Hold on. There it is. Motion, second. All right, motion and second. All those in favor, please vote. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Greer, for keeping me on track. I'm sorry? Oh, ex parte communications, yes. Item number three. Has anyone had any ex parte communications on item number three? Hearing no one come forward, Ms. Greer, would you please read item number three into the record?
Item number three, PDC 2350P, University Car Wash. The owner is PW University Shade LLC. It's quasi-judicial and we have Rosina Leider here for staff. It's approving a preliminary site plan for a car wash of approximately 3,825 square feet on approximately 0.82 acres off of University Parkway.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Greer. The applicant, is the applicant represented? Good morning, Mr. Rudisil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Scott Rudisil. I'm attorney at Blaylock Walters, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We have a couple of folks here with me today. The applicant is Brightwork Real Estate, and we have Matt Britton and Wright Bars here with, with Brightwork, and then Brett Neverill, who is our project engineer. Okay, this is our project site. The site is a small site. It is approximately 0.82 acres located at the northwest corner of Shade and University Avenue, about a half mile east of US 301. And this is the zoning map. You can see the site is already zoned, planned development commercial, so the request that is before you today is not a rezone. It is just for preliminary site plan approval for a car wash facility. And car wash is a permitted use in the planned development commercial zoning district. This is your future land use map of the site. It's designated MU mixed use, which again, is one of the more intensive future land use designations that, that the county has. It's intended for areas that are, that are expected to have significant growth. And this is a map just showing some of the surrounding developments. They have a good mix of uses in this area. The project is completely surrounded by the Village at Sarasota Project, which some of you might remember it was approved a few months ago. And this is site plan showing the prior approval for this site. This is a bank that was approved back in 2007, never constructed, and that site plan has since expired. And here's a, here's a color version of the preliminary site plan for this project. You can see the cars are going to enter off of Shade. They'll go through the kiosk, through the tunnel, and then when they come around, you have, you have vacuum stations with shade coverings. Okay, there are a few specific approvals being requested for this project, so I want to give a little background on that. First of all, as we mentioned, it's a small site. It is tight. It is also in the entranceway, which triggers a bunch of additional requirements. However, one of those requirements is enhanced buffering, which this site will be providing even in the areas where they are requesting a reduction in the width of the buffer. The other situation that happened with this project is, at the time of our submittal, the Village of Sarasota Project that I mentioned had not been submitted. And so when this project was originally designed and submitted, it did not have to account for any of the regulations related to adjoining residential. Unfortunately, that project passed us in the process, and so midstream, we had to try to redesign as we could and accommodate the fact that we now had residential approved adjacent to the site. And so that, that is a reason for a number of these requests. That's actually the reason for all of these requests on the first page here. So if you see the top, we've highlighted the stacking areas there for the drive-through. The requirement is that they be 30 percent, or I'm sorry, 30 feet from residential zoning. We do not have that. We actually only have six and a half feet on that side. The other reason for that is because we had to push the entrance to the site all the way to the north, so that's something we'll get into a little bit later as well. So we have six and a half feet on that side. However, the residential to the north of that is actually the parking area for that project. So it is not, it is not residential units. On the west, you can see the, the tunnel itself is required to have 35-foot setback from residential. The drying areas are required to be setback 50 feet from residential. We don't meet either of those. The tunnel is 15 feet. But the dryer is on the southern end of the, of the tunnel. It is oriented towards university, and it is inside the tunnel. And also, again, the Village at Sarasota Project that's adjacent here, this area is their amenity center and clubhouse is not adjacent to the residential units. And lastly, at the bottom, there's a red circle, and that was where this project had originally proposed for cross-access. The Village at Sarasota Project did not provide for cross-access, so there was no reason to, to include that, but technically that is another specific approval request. All right, the, the next round of specific approvals are related specifically to the design considerations for this project. Specifically, they have shade covers over the vacuum areas. They also have an enclosure for the, for the vacuum itself. And so we think these are superior design features for the project, but what they do is they trigger setback requirements that would not otherwise apply. And so that's the reason for these specific approval requests. You see in the yellow, that's the vacuum area. It's enclosed, and it is setback 20 feet from Shade, where 30-foot setback is required for structures. And then at the southeast corner, that is a covered, those are parking spaces that are covered with a shade structure. Because of that shade structure, it was required to meet setbacks, but we're proposing 15-foot setback from Shade and 20-foot setback from university, where 30 would be required. And then this is the, the last page of specific approvals. Again, this is the buffer on the north. The entrance to the project, you can see on the plan, is pushed all the way up to the north of the site. That's done at the request of the county to try and align as closely as possible with the, with the adjoining driveway access across Shade Avenue. And so the result of that is that we only have six feet of, six feet of buffer on the north. Again, it's adjacent to the parking area for the project to north. The buffer is reduced on Shade from 20 feet down to 12, but there is also a nine-foot reservation of right-of-way in that area. So there is additional separation there. And then the last specific approval is the entranceway requirement to preserve 75 percent of trees exceeding 24-inch DBH. There are only two trees on this site that meet that, and one of them is in the middle of the site, so we're not going to meet the 75%. But the other one is on, in a buffer area, so that one, we will try to preserve when we get to construction details. Staff is supporting all the specific approval requests, and we appreciate their work on this project. And we're respectfully requesting your recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rudisil. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I have, yes, sir, thanks. Mr. Rudisil, can you be more specific about you had submitted your plans and the other group for the residential process faster, and you had to change it? Can you just detail how the timelines look and what happened? I mean, that's curious to me.
Um, we, gosh, this project's been in process now for, it's been a significant amount of time. Part of the, part of the holdup on this project was, we were, we're looking at the specific approvals. Ultimately, staff came to us and said, this was originally submitted as a GDP. Ultimately, staff came to us and said, hey, we need to go back and do a preliminary site plan. We want to see more detail on this project. And so that took some time. So there were, there were some delays, and the other project just moved quicker and went ahead of us.
Okay. I, I don't have any particular problem. I'm just curious about, you know, how our constituents are treated as they come in to invest and do business in the area. I, I worked on some of the projects around here, and I know a lot of the shade traffic actually is connected through the backside and all the integrated roadways off over to Tuttle. So I don't have as many problems with the traffic as you might, and it's on a commercial road, and it seems like car washes are in great demand. So I just was curious how the process went. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Anything else for the applicant at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Rudisil. Staff?
Good morning again, Rosina Leider, and it has been sworn, I'm going to go fast with the, some of the statements that the applicant already covered, but the application is for approval of 3,800 more or less square feet of car wash and located in 0.82 acres. And the site is already resoned PDC and is with the airport impact overlay. The site is located in the northwest corner of Shade and University Parkway and is adjacent to, with the future land use category of MU, like the applicant state, that is one more of the intensive future land use categories with the comprehensive plan, and is adjacent to the east to OL, that is a office, medical office complex. And it's on PDC, and like I said, it's adjacent to PDO and to the north and west is adjacent to the Village of Sarasota that was approved last year for 310 residential units. As the applicant explained, when they started the process, this site was partially vacant and was included only a gun range facility. In the meantime, it's important to say that was approved this residential complex and also the regulations related to dry trough and car washes in the land development code include new regulations, more strict regulations for car washes and dry trough facilities adjacent to residential areas. And like I said, to the north, this site is adjacent to the residential complex, Village of Sarasota. To the south is adjacent to the university parway. To the east is the complex office, and to the west is the amenity center for the Village of Sarasota, and to the north, northwest corner is one of the residential buildings. This is the site plan that the applicant showed up and has one access point along Shade, and by staff was requested to move as more, to the north as much as possible. The car wash facility include vacuums and drying areas, has overall connection like with the university parkway, and all the internal washing machinery going to be operated completely enclosed to the building. As the applicant says, they have nine specific approvals, and staff is supporting the specific approvals, and I'm going to go again over that in a different order that the applicant explained it, but the first one that we have in the staff report is to reduce the nor buffer from 10 feet to 6 feet. And in that area, we are supporting because the adjacent area to the north is the parking area to the complex. The specific approval number two is to reduce the required 30-foot front seatback along university parkway to 20 feet, and is in, to the south where you see the number two, and is related basically to the vacuum areas that has, has an structure and is considered that the seatback is applicable for them. But it's not any building located within this seatback reduction. It's the structure for the vacuum areas. The, number three is to reduce the required seatback along Shade, and this from 30 feet to 15 feet. Given the requirement for right-of-way seatback, the applicant cannot apply the 30-foot roadway buff, the 20-foot roadway buffer that is required in the entranceway, and they are proposing 20 feet of roadway buffer, and they are proposing 15 feet of seatback. You know, the two specific approvals are related, but the constraint is the reservation that is imposed by the seatback from Shade. And the number five, that is to the west, and the number four, the number four is to reduce the separation for essential uses adjacent to the site that require for car washes 50 feet, and the applicant is proposing in that area, an additional five-foot screening buffer, because what is required over there is 10 feet, but in order to create more separation, they are proposing an additional five feet, and reduce the distance to 15 feet. In the next page, we have the number six, 6A and 6B, that are related to the reduction of the distance for vehicular stacking area from 30 feet to 15 feet, and also the reduction of the dry trough from 30 feet to 6.5 feet. The number seven is what is related to the trees within more than 24 DBH in the entranceway, and like the applicant explained, there are only two trees in that condition. And the number eight is to reduce the roadway buffer that I already says along Shade. And the number nine is to eliminate the requirement for cross-access within the entranceway, and like the applicant explained, the adjacent property was, is approved, and they don't have any possibility to connect to that property, to the west or to the north. To the north is approved with a parking area for that development, and to the west is the amenity areas and another building. There is no possibility to connect with them. The positive aspect that this is in the use and the intense is with the regulations for the MU is an area that is appropriate for redevelopment. The site was previously approved for other commercial facility, was a bank, but expired, and the project has access to major thoroughfare that is Shade and university parkway. The negative aspect is like we are remarking, there are nine specific approvals to try to accommodate the prototype of the car wash in this small site, and spacing for access and design don't met the Manatee County Public Works standards, and there is a stipulation that a time of an outside plan has to be revisited, and they need a traffic operational analysis to determine the specific condition of that. That is what is playing here in the mitigation factors that the applicant proposed, an additional five feet to the west in order to separate it more the residential complex. And the buffer is reduced in some areas, but the planting is exceeding or meeting the minimum requirements. And staff is supporting all the specific approvals, and consider that with the specific approval, the site is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? So, the buffer on the north, the six-foot buffer on the north?
Sorry.
That's all right.
Sorry, sorry. What is your question? Sorry. I was, I apologize. Sorry.
That's all right, Rosina.
I switched to Spanish and asked, oops, sorry. Yeah.
I can't, I can't do that.
No, I know, but I wasn't in, oh, that's all. Sorry, I apologize.
The six-foot buffer on the north, the plantings in that buffer, I assume that the applicant can give us an idea of what those are going to be and?
Yes, going to comply with the regulations. I think that in that area, they're going to place one additional tree.
Okay. The applicant can probably touch on that.
Yes, but there is no reduction in the planting requirements. There are the minimum requirements or exceeding the requirements with the reduction of the buffers.
All right. Thank you. Anything else for staff? Thank you, Rosina.
And also, in that area to the north, like the applicant stated, there is a parking lot, and the near building is located 150 feet from the project boundary, the near building for residential.
You don't have a plan of that, do you, that we could look at, or is that inappropriate?
We can see in the area, but it's not, it's not built yet, but to the north, you have it, Scott? You have the plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it'd be worthwhile just to look at that plan.
Yeah, but in the staff report, there is a sketch that shows the parking lot, and I can find it in my book, and the building separation.
All right.
Okay, let me get it.
All right. If there's nothing for staff, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. Any closing comments from staff?
Can you switch to document camera, please? If you see in the document camera, the buildings in red are the Village of Sarasota, and the first building to the south is the clubhouse after the amenity center. This is one of the residential buildings that, in that corner, the applicant is proposing the drive-through, and to the north that you see is the parking area, and there is a separation between the property line to the end of the parking area of 150 feet in the project that is approved.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff closing comments?
No, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right. Applicant closing comments?
Our applicant closing comment? Yeah, I was trying to get some of the details on that north buffer. I know that it is, it is the entranceway requirement, which I believe is a 60% opacity, and it has additional plantings and things like that, so it is, it is an enhanced buffer within, within that six feet, and we'll be providing what is required there.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else unless there're?
Has the applicant contemplated hours of operation? Usually, these places are, I mean, I go to them, we all go to them, you know, they're closed by six or seven o'clock at night, I don't know, but without stipulating hours of operation, theoretically, it could be open at 2:00 a.m. with those dryers blowing. So, maybe between now and the board, you could contemplate what hours of operation you might put in here, just so, but since the neighbors aren't here, however, two years from now, when there are neighbors there, and you're open until nine o'clock, and those blowers are running, you might want to contemplate that.
Right. We'll look at that. The hours of operation generally are 7:30 to 7:30, so yeah, we may look at that between now.
All right. Anything for the applicant? All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
I just have a comment. I, I think this is an appropriate location for a car wash, but I'm just concerned that there's too many site constraints, given the number of requests for reduction of setbacks and buffers, so I'm not sure this is the best use for this particular site. That's my opinion.
Mr. Rudesil?
Yeah, I was just going to say the opposite, good we have a board, but there's several things that I thought were important. First of all, when staff gives a recommendation, I believe they have exercised the prospect enough to give us good advice, so that's the first thing. The second thing is that I like density of taxable land. So, taking this piece of land, which is on a commercial note, now it's on university, it's on Shade, and there's a parking lot, that's a commercial site of all styles, and the density in a small space, because these are usually more like an acre or something, is going to put bigger density, better land value because of the taxation appraisal, and so I like that. And like I say, because it sits where it sits, and I've worked on that commercial note, you know, there's Starbucks in there. I mean, if, you know, there's traffic. So, I'm going to be in support of it for those reasons, because I like good, dense land use as an infill. The other neighbor wasn't there, and I feel a little bit perplexed about the process, how that occurred, and having to change it, and then ending up with these changes, because a number of the exceptions are for things that happen because of what's next door. So, I'm going to be in favor of it, not, we may not need another car wash, but this is America, and you can put one there if you want, so that's going to be my.
Mr. Chair, excuse me for interrupting. Did you ask for public comment? There's no speakers on the board, but I can't remember if you asked.
I think we did.
Yes. Okay.
Nobody came forward.
Okay.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? This will not be cheap, because you've got to build a vault for your stormwater, I noticed. So, I'm going to be running a lot of.
Your taxes.
Oh, sorry. No, it won't be taxes. They got to pay for it. All right. Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve in a second. Please vote.
Doesn't want me to vote. Oh, there it is.
It looks like the motion passes six to one with Ms. Kevah in opposition, and I believe you previously explained your, thank you. We are going to take a short five-minute break now, because the county attorney needs to switch seats, I believe. We're moving the neck chairs in the Titanic. So, we'll take a short five-minute break. Item, item number four. Anyone have any expertise communication on item number four for the planning commissioners? Seeing no one, Ms. Greer, would you please read item number four into the record?
Yes, sir. Item number four, PDMU 2324 ZG, Avidon Parkway. This was the one that we mentioned in the update memo. It is quasi-judicial. Rosina Leider is here for staff, and as we mentioned before, there was a revised general development plan, revised specific approval letter, the inter-local agreement with Sarasota has been included, specific approval number four was deleted, and the staff report was also revised and updated.
Is the applicant represented?
Good morning, planning commissioners. For the record, Ria Lopez. I'm with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I have been sworn. I'm just going to let my presentation come up and then get started. All right. So, the project we have before you today is named Avidon Parkway, and our request is for a rezone to the planned development mixed-use zoning district with a general development plan. Here with me today, we have Mr. Chuck Hollis, who is owner of Third Wave Development and applicant for this project. We also have our land use attorney, Mr. Caleb Grimes, as well as our project engineer, Marcus Geiger with Kim Lee Horn, our transportation engineer, Yuri Baika with TR Transportation Consultants, as well as our environmental consultant, Dylan Reeves with Biotech Consulting. So, the rezone request we have before you today is depicted on the screen before you. We are looking at the property outlined in red, and we are requesting to rezone this from a planned development commercial and residential multifamily six zoning district to a unified planned development mixed-use. And this is to allow for a maximum of 210 dwelling units on the property, as well as a maximum commercial intensity of 70,100 square feet. The project is located in the southern portion of the county, right at its border with Sarasota County. It is on University Parkway to the south and Whitfield Avenue to the west. The project is over 12 acres in size, in fact, it's 12.765 acres. It is partially developed, as you can see on the aerial map before you, with commercial uses on the western portion. It is within the residential nine future land use district, and as I said, the existing zoning is PDC, as well as RMF six in a small portion. It is also within the Evers Reservoir watershed overlay for just a small portion of the site to the west. The site, as you can clearly tell from the aerial map, is an infill property. To the north on Manatee County side, we have a number of denser residential uses, like apartments and condominiums around the project, as well as two parcels immediately to the north that are currently vacant. On the Sarasota County side of things, there are some residential uses, as well as an assisted or senior living facility, and the Longwood Park, which is a public facility operated by Sarasota County. As you can see, the site is well separated from any single-family residential uses, and also has frontage along the rapidly developing University Parkway corridor. So, on the screen before you is our proposed general development plan. We have two programs, which is the residential program and then the commercial program. Our residential program is for a maximum of 210 multifamily homes, at a gross density of 16.45 dwelling units to an acre. This will be provided with onsite private amenities, as well as perimeter buffering for compatibility. The commercial uses are pre-existing onsite at approximately 40,000 square feet. However, we are looking to intensify these commercial uses, allowing up to a maximum of 70,000 square feet on the site. We are also proffering a schedule of uses with this application to ensure that the uses developed on this are compatible with the residential within the project, as well as the surrounding areas. This is a visual that shows what future development on the site will look like. The site will be planned with interconnectivity between the residential and the commercial areas, with access onto University Parkway directly from the residential, as well as the existing access that goes to Whitfield Avenue. We will also be planning for shared stormwater retention in the project, and we are requesting for three specific approvals, which I will detail further in my presentation. So, just talking a bit about the context of the project, where you see the orange pin, that's where our site is located, on University Parkway. This site presents a very unique opportunity for development, as all the growth on the University Parkway corridor has made it very desirable for residential and mixed-use communities. As you can see, there are numerous grocery stores, including Publix, Walmart, et cetera, all within a 15 to 20-minute drive of the site. There's also numerous recreational opportunities, with especially the Longwood Park, as well as the Conservatory Park, within a 15-minute walk of the site. Besides this, there are numerous entertainment opportunities, including the UTC Mall, Lakewood Ranch Town Center, and numerous other restaurants, all accessible at a short walk or drive from the site. So, within this context, we are presenting to you a mixed-use project. The commercial within this site is already very compatible with residential uses, with uses like a dentist office, a restaurant, massage school, as well as the Seeds of Life Montessori Academy. These commercial uses are already desirable in proximity to residential areas. The residential uses we are proposing, in turn, are expected to activate the commercial uses and grow them over time.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
To be clear, the drawing in the lower right corner is not something that we're approving today, it's just a cartoon. We're approving a GDP that is just a cartoon, correct?
Yes, and we have the GDP as well. This is just showing the placement of buildings and so on, so that it, you know, you can understand...
Not committing to any of that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, there will be pedestrian and vehicular connections between the residential and commercial, and through the access on university, this is expected to alleviate existing traffic on Whitfield Avenue as well, by providing another avenue to get to University Parkway. So, the residential program is on the eastern portion of the property. Again, it's for 210 multifamily units. This shows the general layout of what is expected to be developed on the project. Each of the buildings are four stories in height, and we will also have approximately over 5.5 acres of wetland preservation on the property as well. The density proposed is under the allowances of the future land use district, which allows for a density of up to 20 dwelling units to an acre for mixed-use projects at activity nodes. Our density is lower than that at 16.45, and this is limited based on the restrictions due to wetland coverage and wetland impacts proposed with this project, in accordance with the regulations of the county plan, as well as the Land Development Code. So, coming to our specific approvals, our first request is a reduction for parking from 1.8 to 1.5 spaces per unit, and we're doing this mainly to reduce impervious surface area on this infill property. This is something that is allowed for projects within the WPE, and besides that, due to the strategic location of this project, in, you know, in proximity to walkable commercial opportunities, as well as in proximity to transit, we believe that this would still work in this location with reduced parking. So, bus route two, which is a SCAD bus route, has a stop that is just a 13-minute walk from the project, and from there, you can reach the Sarasota Bradenton Airport, from which you can access the bus system for Manatee County, as well as Sarasota County. Besides this, there are similar parking ratios approved for projects along University Parkway, which again, is a corridor that is very suitable for this sort of reduction. Our next specific approval request is to reduce the roadway buffer width on University Parkway from 20 feet to 15 feet. Again, this is needed in order to make this tight infill property work from a functional standpoint, but at the same time, we are proposing enhanced plantings in order to meet the intent of the LDC regulations. Here, we are proposing six instead of five understoryed trees every 100 feet, in order to meet the screening and light requirements. Similarly, our next specific approval is for a reduction in the greenbelt buffer, and this is only for the tiny portion indicated in orange on the map. So, there we're seeking a reduction from 15 to 10 feet, again, with a buffer with enhanced plantings, in order to mitigate for the effects of the reduction in width. Our commercial program is on the western portion of the site. Again, here we are permitted an FAR of 1.0 for mixed-use projects at activity nodes. There is about 43,000 square feet of existing commercial, and we are looking to propose a maximum of 70,100 square feet, which results in a .35 FAR. Existing access will continue to be via Whitfield Avenue, however, traffic could be alleviated to Whitfield Avenue by using the University Parkway connection as well. Again, we will have a profit schedule of uses included in the application. As we all know, there is an abundance of infrastructure available on University Parkway, so the project is well-served in terms of transportation, utilities, stormwater, and emergency services, as well as schools, which will be evaluated at the time of PSP and FSP. We've had two community meetings, the first one being the notice community meeting, and thereafter, we've also met voluntarily with the residents of the adjoining Palmer communities, in order to discuss our project, and we've got input from them, which would be really helpful when we get into detailed design of this project. The project is entirely consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. This is in terms of the residential nine future land use district, as well as several other goals, including horizontal mixing of users, commercial development at activity nodes, as well as increasing density and intensity in areas that are well-served by public facilities. We really appreciate staff's help through this process, and we have been working with them and are in agreement with all the staff suggested conditions. We are, however, still working on the stormwater conditions, it's just in terms of clarifying the intent of some of the language proposed, and we will have that done by the time of the board hearing for this project. So, with that, before we conclude, I would just like to invite Chuck Hollis, the applicant for this case, to just talk about his vision for the project.
Good morning, Chuck Hollis, and I'm with Third Wave Development, and I've been sworn in. So, wanted to speak to you all this morning about the why of the project. And so, this is truly an infill site. It was part of a PD that was previously approved and only partially constructed, and so the vacant parcel with which we're working is immediately adjacent, and has the opportunity for the interaction with the existing commercial. So, that existing commercial was built, oh, somewhere around 20 years ago, and so what we're seeking to do with this project is develop an infill site that really has all of the infrastructure around, and not only from a logistics standpoint, but also, you know, grocery stores, you know, transportation, et cetera, all of the things that the residents will want to access. Historically, this corridor has been really a suburban corridor, and we believe that our mixed-use proposal here, you've got a school right adjacent to this community, you've got restaurants, and the existing commercial, and so, you know, that is an opportunity, we believe, and the highest and best opportunity for this particular site. And the way that we have worked with staff, and again, thank you, they have really been helpful, to shape-shift the project in a way, because by virtue of being an infill site, it requires a little bit of work to make all of the different conditions of the Land Development Code work, and so they, we have done that. And the reason that you see some of those cartoons, that there was a question of, we've thought all the way through, whether it's stormwater, or building setbacks, or easements with the power company, et cetera, we've thought all the way through, more toward, you know, the engineering side of things, at even this early stage, and so that's the reason we're showing and illustrating to you all, that we have put the time in to analyze and evaluate those components.
Thank you, Chuck. So, these are just a few images that we had created to show the vision for the project, and these are all rendered designs done by the actual architect for the project. So, with that, I will conclude our presentation. The project is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern. There is abundant available infrastructure to support this growth. It allows for horizontal mixing of compatible, as well as complementary uses, and it is entirely consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Land Development Code. With that, once again, we'd really like to thank staff for all of their diligence and effort helping us through the process, and we respectfully request for your recommendation of approval. My team and I are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rutledge?
Yes, thanks for the presentation, and I concur with the infill concept, and I like the designed access off University and Whitfield. I think that is always a good thing when we homogenize those corners. I do have a question. How do you anticipate going from 40,000 feet to 70,000 feet with the existing buildings? So, is demolition of those buildings in the year offing, is that kind of the way to get that done?
Right, so it would involve completely repurposing, perhaps, or maybe adding an additional floor. That would be like a structural thing that would be anticipated down the line, but it would, you know, it is anticipative of future redevelopment of that property.
And that would then impact the parking ratios by making it higher? I mean, I guess that's, I'm just curious. I mean, have you thought through that?
So, not in detail for the parking ratios of the commercial, because that would really depend on the exact uses going into there at a future time, but at the same time, we're not seeking any allowances from the code at this time.
Okay.
And we'll have to, we'll have to figure it out with existing parking. There is an abundance of parking currently in the commercial areas, though.
Thank you.
But to follow up on Mr. Rutledge's comment, you're not proposing commercial on the multifamily piece?
No, no.
Just proposing it over on the west side?
Yes, yes. We are proposing commercial uses on the western portion where it currently exists, and the residential component is to the east.
And also, to be clear, you showed some elevations, however, you're not committing to those. You're not saying that the project will not substantially deviate from those. They're just cartoons. They're not, you're not committing to that building.
So, we anticipate that they will be built in...
Mr. Grimes knows what I'm asking.
Go ahead.
Yes. We are willing to say they will be in substantial compliance with those.
Okay, good.
We do not have a problem with that, because that's, as Mr. Hollis, I'm sorry, Caleb Grimes, I have been sworn.
Been sworn.
As Mr. Hollis explained, they have been thinking this through, all the way through the project, and this is the design they're looking for, and that, you know, as always, substantial compliance.
Fine. Let's not dwell on it today, I'm happy with that. Before it goes to the board, you can work on a stipulation.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Ms. Greer?
The GDP that was recently revised, I believe as late as yesterday, does not show the access arrows on it, so you may want the applicant to discuss where those access points will be.
Can we see the actual GDP that we're voting for today, so there's no miscommunication?
We have it on one of our slides, so I'll just pull that up and... So, this is the actual general development plan on the screen before you, and they're a little small, so we can probably, you know, increase the size of those arrows, but you'll see the access arrows in green. Those are the external access connections, and you'll see one to Whitfield Avenue, and then one to University Parkway. And besides that, we've kind of also put in internal access arrows that show the cross-connections, either from Palmer Plaza Road going, you know, north and south to the commercial, as well as the interconnection between the commercial and the residential. So, but we can increase the size of those arrows, so that they're more clear for the board hearing.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes, and are those green arrows onto these roadways, either DOT or county, approved and available? You've put them there, but I mean, are they available?
Right, so we have been working with your staff. Both of these are roadways that are, none of these are state roadways. I mean, University Parkway has a shared agreement with Sarasota County, and so we've met with the Manatee County staff and actually discussed in a lot of detail the actual location of that access point with regards to, you know, turning lanes and things like that as well. So, we've started thinking about those items and worked those conditions out with staff already, but at the same time, you know, once we get into the detailed PSP and FSP stages, that'll be worked out in even further detail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to belabor the point, but just so that we're all clear, similar to the elevations, you showed a site plan that showed building locations, et cetera. We are not approving those, we're not reviewing any of those. That indeed is just a cartoon. This is the GDP, and this is what we're approving.
Right, and to that, we will add that, you know, when we started this project, we did show building footprints and everything on the GDP, so it's not something that we are afraid to commit to, but it's just, you know, we're trying to keep the GDP standard at a certain level of detail, so per county direction, it's been boiled down.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, that we're not committing to that site plan, and that if you sell the project, when you get done with this hearing today, there might be a different building location. We're not committing to that.
Right.
We're just committing to this GDP.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff presentation.
I'm going to go fast to the items that the applicant already talked, but this is a rezone to PDC from, this is a rezone to PDMU from PDC and residential multi- PDMU from PDC and residential multifamily six in 12.76 acres and is within the watershed protection overlay district and is approving a GDP with 210 multifamily units and 70,100 square feet of office and commercial uses. The applicant is requesting three specific approvals. One is to reduce the parking radius from 1.8 to 1.5. The second one is to reduce the roadway buffer along the University Parkway to, from 20 feet to 15 feet. And the third one is a little portion of the greenbelt buffer to the northwest portion of the site from 15 feet to 10 feet. The site is like the applicant explained in the northeast corner of Whitfield Avenue and University Parkway and includes seven parcels and is partially developed with a commercial and office area that include a school facility. Is within the res nine future and news category with allowed 0.35 feet of Florida ratio and the maximum density for mixed-use development and an activity center is 20 dwelling units per acre. And actually, the site is on PDC and RSM, residential multifamily six. And to the north is a vacant area that is on PDC and further north is a residential area that is on residential multifamily six. To the south is University Parkway and across to the University Parkway, there are a shore facility, assisting living facilities and single-family residential uses. To the east is an established residential multifamily area on PDR and to the west too is across Whitfield is a residential multifamily area on PDR. And this is the GDP that include the existing area with the buildings and also the buffers and the area, the potential area that is the area to the east in which gonna be located the multifamily buildings. The maximum high is six, four stories and show the potential location of the stormwater facilities. And also, like the applicant says, there is a green arrow to the south that show access to University Parkway and internal connection to the commercial area that is in brown, another potential connection to the north in brown and after that, the existing access along Whitfield. That's what it already says. And this is an area that is an infill development that is subject to, that has many mixed uses in the area as the design incorporated and existing area into the development in order to create a mixed-use multifamily, a mixed-use commercial and office use with multifamily. There is internal connections that is required in the code for cross-access between the commercial portion and the multifamily portion and also connections to the adjacent parcel to the north. And the applicant provide the schedule of uses to limited the potential uses that could be affected, the multifamily portion. The negative aspect is the reduction of the parking ratio for residential, the reduction of the buffer on the roadway buffer and the greenbelt buffer, however, the reduction in parking is justified and in general, this kind of development, they have their own standards that they analyze with other facilities and they have a ratio that they usually use and they are proposing from 1.8 to 1.5. And also, for the roadway buffer, they are adding one additional under story tree to the buffer. They are reducing the width, but they are providing more planting material. And with the other portion is a little portion of the greenbelt buffer that gonna be reduced to 10 feet and they are complying with the minimum requirements. Staff is in support of the specific approvals and if you have any questions, we are here to answer the question. Also, is the understanding of staff that the sketch that the applicant show is not binding? Is only the general development plan?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point?
Sorry, I have to also remark that the density is calculated in compliance with the regulations related to the density transfer for wetland areas that are in the comprehensive plan and the land development code.
Okay. Can you go back a, back one? So, Evers Watershed Protection Overlay District, it looked to me on the drawing I saw earlier that this site is actually not in the Evers Watershed.
Yeah, it has a little portion and I'm gonna address this for the next round because the parkings in the commercial, in the multifamily area are not with the watershed.
Okay.
Okay? I'm gonna address that for the next, the watershed is more in the commercial portion.
All right, great.
But however, we have other cases recently approved in which the applicants are demonstrated that they're gonna have enough parking because usually they have apartments, three bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedroom, and the ratio for parking generation is different between ones and they have their own calculations.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, anything, any questions for staff? All right, thank you. We will open the public here, the public comment portion of this hearing. I believe, is there anyone that would like to come forward? Do you have a schedule or, Ms. Petref, do you want to start? Please state your name, whether or not you've been sworn, county residence, and I believe that you have and are awarded...
Good morning. My name is Patricia Petref. I have been sworn. I'm a resident of Manatee County. I'm also a land use attorney. I represent the adjacent property owner which, and I gave a letter to the staff, TGM Turnberry LLC is a rental complex with over 500 residents in it. I was surprised today to hear that there was a neighborhood meeting because my client said they weren't invited. So, and he was surprised. He said, "Isn't there supposed to be neighborhood meetings about this?" And I said, "Yes, sir. Usually, staff requires it." And he said, "Well, we got no notice." So, the Turnberry people have not been heard until yesterday afternoon until 3 o'clock. This was the cartoon, as Mr. Bedford indicated, that I received. I took it off the application, off the internet site of the county. And my concerns are several. Number one, this is the first time in a really long time I have seen such a large building put in the middle of a wetland. It's an existing wetland in an area of known flooding. We shouldn't be taking wetlands away, at least not to the extent that this project is suggesting that in order to fit their 210 units, they might need to. You know, the alternative, if you approve 210 units and they do not get the wetland permit to put that building in those wetlands, will be higher buildings. That is problematic for my client. My client has several, you know, units. They, this is the aerial photograph that was online. So, my client is this project right here. The drainage, you can see the drainage comes right there into their wetland. We're very, very concerned. And then there's a street that comes out to University and there's like a little culvert under that street as well. We're very, very concerned about the stormwater because the stormwater drains onto our property. We don't want to be flooded because we took three acres of wetlands out and we, they're taking out this little surface water body. It's not a wetland. It's okay for them to take it out, but this little surface water also holds water. They're putting part of their stormwater pond there. Put the little picture back. They're putting part of their stormwater pond where that surface water body is. They're putting another little part of a stormwater pond here and they're maintaining this wetland here. I heard under oath today that they don't have the stormwater details worked out. That's of grave concern for my clients. It's also a concern for me, this is the first time I've seen, although Mr. Grimes assured me that it has happened at least once before in the county, where an existing commercial area owned by someone else gets brought together, you know, with consolidating parcels to use that as a piggyback, as a prop, to apply for a mixed-use zoning category to raise the density from nine units per acre to 20. My client's property is at rez three. Now, I'm not saying that multifamily is not compatible with their project. It is. There is, they are a multifamily project, but they're at a much, much lower density. If you look at this particular proposal, which includes eliminating most of the wetlands, you will see that there is no usable open space for those residents. There's really nothing there but buildings and parking lots. That's not a quality development that we would have normally considered under a planned development district. Your planned development district statement says, "It is further intended that PDMU development shall be in complexes with carefully located buildings, parking and service areas, open space and use mixtures which are scaled and balanced to reduce general traffic congestion by providing interdependent uses and uses which are compatible with adjacent and surrounding land uses." This is, we're trying to shoehorn something in at this location. You know, there should be no special exceptions required, none of the special approvals required. You can eliminate the special approvals if you make these buildings a little bit smaller. You can meet the parking requirement. You can meet the setback requirements. There should be no need for special approvals when you're doing this type of a mixed-use project. You have a lot of vacant land on this project. You should be able to fit your development on the vacant land. The other problem that I have is, I understand, because I'm a land use attorney, I understand that people don't want to spend a whole lot of money on a preliminary development plan before they get their zoning. It costs a lot of money. I get that. But the lack of detail here is alarming to me because it's in an area of known flooding. Some of it's in the Evers Reservoir. It's on two very heavily traveled streets with level of service D. It, there's not enough meat on the bones for anyone to actually know what's going to be put there except four-story multifamily buildings, hopefully at a density of 210 units. The, the commercial is going to be approved for not significantly more square footage, but some. I think it's about 20,000 or 25,000 square feet. They're upping it to 70,000. We have no idea where that's gonna go. We don't know. Maybe the buildings will have another story put on them if it can support an extra story. Maybe there's plenty of parking, we're not sure. It's just of concern. The other issue with respect to the mixed-use, by adding that existing commercial to this project, consolidating those projects for mixed-use, more density was allowed because of how the density calculations for wetlands are done. So, wetlands are done on the overall project density, project acreage. So, instead of seven acres or eight acres or nine acres of uplands or whatever this project is, the vacant, when you added the commercial to it, you got a bump because you take that 12.73 acres, whatever it is, times 20% instead of taking the lower number where the wetland is on the vacant land and make, multiplying that by 20%. So, that increased the unit count minimally, but still increased the unit count. So, on behalf of my client, we have grave concerns, mostly stormwater. We would certainly like a little bit bigger setback than 15 feet adjacent to our property, but I understand that that's the minimum and you, they're not required to give that. I would like them to have that on that four-story building next to my client's property. It is right up against, I mean, you know, if the surveyor made a mistake, it's gonna be in the buffer. It's that close to that buffer. So, I think that should be back a little bit further, but at this point, you know, on behalf of my client, we object to the concept that's being presented to you today. You don't have enough information to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petref. Any questions?
Ms. Petref, can you, if you haven't already done so, can you provide the items that you put on the...
They're, they're things I took out of the staff report. They're part of your staff report, sir.
The, I believe you included...
This aerial photograph is online.
And then the prior GDP, I think. Did you write on that at all or make any notations on that?
It just says two-story buildings. That was what my client told me was...
But you didn't make any notations on it?
That, just that little two-story building right there where I, that's my handwriting, right there.
If you want to use that specific item for the record, I would suggest...
No, I was just using this as the general development plan that the public had available until like 3:00, 3:30 yesterday afternoon.
Okay. If you want to use that specific version of what you put up there, then please provide it to the clerk.
Okay, that's fine.
If not, then you want to defer to the other one that's, that was maybe previously uploaded, then that's fine too. But I'm letting you know, if you want to use that specific one, please provide it to the clerk. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward? Please come forward, state your name, whether or not you've been sworn and your county of residence.
Good morning. I have been sworn in, Barbara Robinson. I live in Manatee County. I'm president of the Palm Air Communities Council, which is made up of representatives from 27 developments within the Palm Air. Our major purpose is to address issues that affect the community. Our major concern with this project is the traffic impact. The entrance and exit on University is only heading west. So, anyone going east, coming out of that 210 apartment complexes, which means 210-plus automobiles, anyone going east is going to have to come out onto Whitfield Avenue. Over the years, our community, through development, not only fully development within our community, but everything around us, the traffic on Whitfield has increased dramatically. And there are many times during the day when, if you're making a left turn off Whitfield onto University Parkway, that traffic is backed up from the light to probably Timberlake Drive, which is a distance of two to three blocks. And you may have to sit through two. There's one day, two weeks ago, I sat through three lights before I could make the left turn onto University. So, the impact of traffic onto Whitfield is very dramatic. We are a residential community. The traffic on Whitfield has increased dramatically over all of the years that I have, that I have lived there. So, that really is our major concern. The other issue is that that exit coming out of the shopping center is very close, I should have measured the distance, I didn't, to the traffic light at University. And within the last year, year and a half, we've had the right turn lane extended because of the backup of traffic on Whitfield. That's alleviated some if you're making the right turn coming off Whitfield. But again, I'd like to say that the community in general, when we, we did schedule a meeting with the developers. I had gone to the first meeting they had. We weren't invited, but a community that was within the 500 feet was notified. a community that was within the 500 feet was notified, they gave me the information. And the group did indicate they'd be happy to meet with our community, and we did arrange a meeting. It was just within the Palm Air community. We had a good turnout, and all of the concerns, I'm coming back and repeating myself, it's the traffic impact. I've become very good friends with the individual at Sarasota County. I probably call every few months because the timing on those lights, as I understand it, is controlled by Sarasota County. Their concern is movement of traffic on University, and they don't seem to care too much about all the traffic coming off Whitfield onto University. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone else? We will be closing the public comment portion. Anyone else? I'm sorry. I hate that thing. You gotta turn the microphone on every time, and it's not very user-friendly, and I'm not particularly user-friendly to begin with. So, anyone else coming forward? No, we'll close the public comment section. And it looks like county attorney has a comment.
Just want to make sure. No last comments on this one, for or against? All right? Seeing none.
Close.
We are getting close to the 10:30 timeframe, Chairman. I don't know if maybe you'd like to...
No, we're gonna, we'll finish this up. Staff closing comments. None? Okay, I have a couple of questions then. On for staff, notice, did we get an affidavit from the applicant saying notice was properly given? Do we know? Maybe the applicant can, this may be something for the applicant.
Good morning, Rosina Leiderberg, staff. The applicant sent the notification and is with the, with the documents in agenda.
Okay. So the county attorney's office is happy with notice?
The county attorney isn't, office isn't aware of any deficiency in notice, and it sounds like an affidavit has been submitted into the record by the applicant. I think the applicant, Ms. Lopez, is gonna confirm?
Yes, yes. So we have submitted all the noticing materials, and we've also submitted the noticing materials for our neighborhood workshop with the lists of residents notified and so on. I also want to note for, you know, the neighborhood meeting as well as these hearings, we've also noticed all the residents within the radius at Sarasota County. So we've pulled, you know, every, all the information per the property appraisers' offices from both counties and noticed them.
All right, thank you. Another question for staff, if, if, if commercial is expanded from the present 30, or whatever it is, to 70, what would be the process for, for that to come through?
If it's not in compliance with the location of the buildings that is right now existing, probably they have to come back to the board. And if they need a specific approval for parking, they have to come back to the board. They don't, we don't know exactly what they, if they're gonna go back. They have a previous approval that said the high and everything. If they don't comply with that, they have to come back to the board.
So there's an existing approval for the...
It's an existing approval for, for the commercial side.
For the commercial side?
Yes.
And if they, if they seek to redevelop that or whatever and change any of that, they're gonna have to come back to the public hearing process?
Yes, for the commercial portion only, and if they don't comply, because they intensify the, the commercial uses that require more parking, and they don't, they, they need to comply with that, come back.
Any questions for staff?
I had a couple.
Mr. Rutledge?
I guess I, I guess I want to make sure that the staff is adequately comfortable with the stormwater design as submitted, because it seems to be there's a question about stormwater.
I can answer that. Denise Greer for staff, and I have been sworn. Since this is a GDP, that's one reason we had them change it from all the detail to what they, what you have in front of you today, because we don't review a GDP to the same level that we would review a PSP. So, they have not provided us any calculations to date. So, they will have to have a 50% reduction in the areas that they fall within certain drainage basins. I believe there's also 150% increased treatment because of the basin that they're in, and any floodplain that they impact, any 100-year floodplain that they impact, they will have to provide compensatory treatment in some manner for that. But those are things that we have not reviewed to date.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that we get a review of those in the performance standard that they're gonna submit as their recommendation, along with their wetlands mitigation, all the rest.
And that would be at the PSP level, correct?
Right, okay. So that, I'm good, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Rutledge? Staff also is in support of the wetland changes due to the generally poor quality of the existing wetland?
Kara Koenig, Environmental Planning Section Manager, and I have been sworn. Yes, and just for the new planning commissioners, welcome. When an applicant submits a general development plan or preliminary site plan that goes forward to public hearing, they submit a wetland impact study. And within that wetland impact study, they talk about the acreage, the quality of the wetland, and the criteria for proposed impacts. And their environmental consultant did provide that to us throughout the public hearing process. There was quite a bit of back and forth, and they are preserving some of the wetlands onsite along the eastern portion. So it isn't the highest-quality wetland, and it isn't the lowest-quality wetland. Infill projects are really difficult, and most of the sites that are easy to develop in the county don't exist anymore. So, we do see sites coming in more and more, demonstrating wetland impacts. They would have had to impact for the access and site circulation, and the wetland is really in the middle of the property. So we had a lot of work with the applicant to make staff feel comfortable with the proposal.
And will they be dealing with a mitigation bank for those impacts?
Yes. So at time of their ERP process with SWFMD, and then through the county process as well, time of final site plans in the middle, we'll get all of those mitigation details.
And, and you may be better off at explaining this than me, but the benefit of doing that is you take a wetland, for instance, this one, which is generally surrounded by development. You know, there probably aren't a whole lot of Florida Panthers running around there. There might be some, you know, plant life. But instead, we take and we essentially buy into a wetland mitigation bank, and then that money can be used in other locations where it's more appropriate to enhance or maintain the wetlands?
Correct. And that is what is currently proposed, although it is general development plan detail. So they'll have to determine the functional loss of the wetland and the functional gain that they'll have to purchase credits for, and then that'll be through a, they'll pay into a mitigation bank that, that's within Manatee County's watershed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
One more thing I wanted to mention with respect to the density and the, the wetlands and the proposed density of multifamily. So the way that the comprehensive plan policy reads is total gross project acreage, and that's how it's calculated. So we did use the commercial and the multifamily acreage because that's the way that the comp plan policy reads.
Okay. Anything else for staff? All right. Applicant closing comments. Mr. Grimes?
Thank you, Commissioners. Caleb Grimes, again, for the record. I would like to address quite a few things here, and I, I want to, hope you understand that this, this project has had a lot of work and study by the applicant to assure that we get this thing to work right. I want to address traffic first. The site, as you see, is already zoned for commercial, except for one little tiny piece of it. And that commercial, if it were to go forward, would create more traffic than the residential is gonna create, and it would not have the access that we are saying we will have to University Parkway. So we went through this at length, and what we like is that our residents that will be there will have access directly to University, and that's generally what should be used and will be used. And the commercial that is there now will also have access to University to help take pressure off. And when you have alternative ways to go, you use the one that, that works. And so, we think that that's very important. But to have that road in there, to get it out to University, it, it is where the wetland is located, and as Kara indicated, that would impact that wetland, and it's not of high quality. And I was really ready to explain how with wetlands that are stuck in the middle of a development area and a high-intensity area, that, that to use the wetland mitigation bank, you end up taking a very poor-quality wetland and turning it into something that is a, a much better quality, where it can be associated with animals that transfer and so forth. So, we've done all those studies of that, and we have staff that has agreed upon it, and we think that is very important. The, the question was raised by Ms. Petrov about the, the fact that you put the commercial with the residential and have a mixed-use development is something that then allows for greater density. You and the board specifically made changes to our comprehensive plan to encourage this. We want this in mixed-use areas. We want to have the higher residential that can associate with mixed-use. And yes, this has been done before, where an existing commercial was put together, post the change in your comprehensive plan, put together with a residential area to, to create a, a good new mixed-use area. And I do want to say one thing, Mr. Bedford, the, the additional commercial, if it is consistent with this general development plan, would go through administratively. What, what Ms. Rosina was explaining, Ms. Leider was explaining, is that if they wanted something with reduced parking, they wanted something with higher buildings, with a different general access points and lasts, they would have to come back here. But they would have the right to develop consistent with the GDP, in, in my estimation. And I agree with what Ms. Leider said. She was explaining that if they can't do that, they would have to come back. We showed you the building layout that we are, have worked out. We often are asked for that because with the GDP, a question arises, will this work? Can you put the buildings on here? Will, will the site work? So we prepared that with our GDP that we submitted, that Ms. Petrov saw, and staff asked us to take those off of the actual approved GDP, so there is flexibility to work with staff to move them around. But we think it is very important that we showed you that, to show that with the four-story buildings, with the layout, with the parking, that this works very, very well, and is, is a very nice layout. We're willing to commit to that layout if it, if it is asked, but it, its purpose is to show you that this is a, a very good layout that, that can work. As to the stormwater, the comment was made that we are working on the stipulations, not that we're working, we've worked on stormwater. We spent a lot of time on it to make sure this site would work before we even came in here. The stipulations had said that there would be a 50% increase, reduction, and the 150% treatment, period. Well, the, that's done where you're within the Evers Reservoir or within the water treatment area, and there was some confusion. We're only a very tiny piece of it along, based on your GIS maps and all the information we have, along the western side where the commercial parking is. And so we are working with staff to make sure that those stipulations say where we meet that criteria. And it's, I, and the statement of known flooding, that, that's because of the Evers Reservoir. We're basically completely outside of it, except for a very small area. So we are working with staff on the language, not the fact that, and I think you all have heard this before, with stormwater, by law, we are required to take care of off-site runoff. We are required to not increase our off-site runoff, and in fact, in this instance, in some instances, we are required to reduce it. We will have all those same requirements and stipulations that you see on all the other developments that come through here, on what we have to meet for stormwater. We cannot adversely affect our neighbors with that. And in fact, by having these ponds expanded, this wetland itself, if you read the report, has expanded because of the building of University and some stuff. It got backed up. So there's some backing up on that where she's concerned about. We will take care of that. We will be required to take care of that with our, our stormwater. And we have our engineer here, if you'd like to ask him any questions. Make sure I hit everything that I think we should hit. I want to just mention the reduction in parking. You all see this almost every week, I think, and I think staff has recognized that with multifamily, that our parking ratios just aren't quite working, and it depends on one store, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom layout. And so, I think this is consistent with the, the things you've been seeing. All in all, I think we have a really good layout. Did you want to add anything to this? Okay. I was gonna give our developer a chance. He did tell me that, that one thing he was gonna say that I will mention in the, the design. If you notice, the design that we're having is a large amenity area in the middle, right in the middle. And so, we are planning to meet the requirements of your code and comp plan, to have that really nice focal point, it was in the pictures you saw, and, and meet all those requirements. So, we would ask that you recommend approval. This is, this is what our comp plan and our board is encouraging us to do. Get on these kind of locations, we're, we're at a node, we're on a very busy road, we have access to everything. And this is where we should have these kind of developments. And as was explained, with infill, sometimes you have a few challenges with some wetlands and things like that, but we're meeting them, and we're taking care of it. So, I'd ask that you recommend approval of the development.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion. If the electronics can work, there we go. We have a motion to approve. We have a second, we have a motion and a second to approve. Please go ahead and indicate your vote. Motion to approve passes unanimously, 7 to 0. We are going to take a 15-minute break at this point, and we'll hear the next two items following that break.
Number five, PA 2310, ordinance 2410, Buchanan Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. It is legislative. Dan Greenberg is here for staff. It's a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element to designate specific real property generally located on the north side of 21st Street Court East, west of Allentown Gillette Road, and east of 28th Avenue East at 3,000, 21st Street Court East Palmetto. From the RES six future land use classification to the RES nine future land use classification. Item number six, PDR 2330, ZG Buchanan Rezone, 1099 Management Company LLC. 1099 Management Company LLC is the owner. It's quasi-judicial. Laura Gonzalez is here for staff. This is a rezone of approximately 21.29 acres, generally located north of 21st Street Court East, approximately 1,000 feet west of the intersection of Allentown Gillette Road and commonly known as 3,021st Street Court East Palmetto. It's a rezone from A1 CPA to PDR zoning, retaining the CPA Coastal Planning Area Overlay District, approving general development plan for residential subdivision of to 191 dwelling units. And staff just passed out an update memo to the GDP to be placed into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Have any planning commissioners had any expedited communications on these, either of these two items?
No.
No, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Rudisil. Again.
Morning. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Scott Rudisil, here on behalf of the applicant, and I have been sworn, the applicant here is 1099 Management Company. And so James Buchanan and Jeff Reynolds were the agents for 1099 that we've been working with on this project. We also have Margaret Tousin and Paige Estegariba here with ZNS. They're our planners on the project. Nathan Kraut is our civil engineer here with ZNS as well. Kerry McNutt is our ecologist and Michael Yates is our traffic engineer. All right, so there are two requests that are before you today for this project. One is a future land use map amendment from RES six to RES nine. And the second request is a rezone from A1 to PDR with a general development plan approval for up to 191 units. We'll start by discussing the map amendment and then we'll get into the rezone and the So again, this is a request to go from RES six to RES nine for a project site, which is just over 21 acres. We kind of looked at some of the other future land use designations in the area of this project, and as you'll see as we get into the discussion, there's a, quite a mix of uses in this area. All right, so this is the location of the project. It's on the north side of 21st Street Court East, just west of Allentown Gillette Road. And this is a closer view. And as I mentioned, you can see we've got, you've got a residential subdivision to the west, some of the larger lot, single-family residential to the east, and then you have industrial uses to the south. And consistent with that, this is the future land use map of the area. Site's RES six. And then to the south, you've got light industrial designation, heavy industrial designation, as well as RES nine, which is what we're requesting to go to today. And this is a map showing the development trends in this area. Again, you can see the industrial to the south. To the west, there's a residential subdivision. And then on the other side of that, there is Project Silverado, which is a large light industrial project. So again, unique mix of uses in this area. To the east, you've got some larger lot residential. And then across Allentown Gillette Road, the PDMU site, that's the R-Live site, which is a combination of light industrial, commercial, residential. And then further to the east, we have the International Trade Port. So as I mentioned, interesting mix of uses in this area. This site is located in the urban core. It's in the urban infill and redevelopment area. It is at an activity node. It is an area that has infrastructure and employment opportunities, and it's an area that the county wants to encourage infill and redevelopment projects. And so this request is right in line with those goals. And I'll talk a little bit about the rezone. As mentioned, this is a rezone from A1 to PDR with a general development plan for up to 191 residential units. So this is the zoning map of the area. Again, you'll see there are planned development residential projects located west and north of this site. There's also planned development further to the west with planned development industrial. There's planned development further to the east with planned development mixed use. So our request to go to planned development residential is in line with the trends in this area. And this is a general development plan. As you can see, there is a large wetland as well as a ditch system on the eastern portion of the project. So this is providing for a a natural extensive buffer and separation from those residential, large lot residential uses to the east. The rest of the project provides for the required 15-foot perimeter buffer and the 20-foot buffer along the roadway. The GDP is intended to provide flexibility. It's a residential project, but it does allow for, for a range of potential residential uses. Could be single-family detached, could be single-family attached, single-family semi-detached, or multifamily in this location, with the maximum height of three stories. And then this is the one specific approval request for this project. There is an existing inner neighborhood connection to the residential subdivision to the west. There was, from our neighborhood workshop, there was a request that if this site ended up developing multifamily, they didn't want us to make that connection. And so we are proposing that if the project ends up being developed for multifamily, that that would be emergency access only. And so that requires a specific approval. And with that, we're requesting your recommendation of approval and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Man, no comment. I'm gonna steal the ones from the fifth floor next time and bring them down. I'll have one for everybody. Okay. Mr. Rudis, I mean, Mr. Rutledge.
Mr. Rudisill, can you be more specific about the request that if it goes to rental multifamily? Because rental multifamily now has single home design. So is it exclusively because it's a rental, or is it because of the height and density that they did not want the access point?
I think it was more, more related to the height and density. So it's a restriction on any multifamily. Even if it were condos, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't provide for that as an access connection there.
They don't want you going in their property?
Right, that's right.
No like you. Okay, got it.
But following up on Mr. Rutledge's comment, the multifamily is unknown at this time.
Correct.
I mean, it, are there any height restrictions?
Three stories.
So three stories, but no location of those heights?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Do you know if you're gonna be, I mean, I, 20 years ago, I was a developer of the Peace to the West. I was the architect, designed all the houses, contractor, built all the houses. So I know the area very well. I put that forest main in, running all the way down the dirt road. Are you gonna connect to that forest main, do you know, or it's too preliminary and you don't have any idea? And I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that unless Nathan...
That's all right. I was just curious.
Yeah.
21st Street improvements?
That's a possibility. We haven't analyzed that yet, but at FSP, you know, we recognize that that's a, that's a possibility.
All right. Anything else for the applicant at this point? All right. Thank you, Mr. Rudisill. Staff presentation?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, new Commissioners. Dan Greenberg, for the record, with Development Services. For the record, the applicant is requesting approval of, or recommendations on, on two cases. I'll present the first one, and then Laura Gonzalez can speak to the rezone. Just to, just to confirm, this is a legislative policy decision. As a reminder, the decision for the board is to determine whether the proposed RES9 future land use classification is in the best interest of the public upon finding that the current RES6 is no longer in the best interest of the public, that the map amendment saw is compatible with development trends in the area, and that the proposed change is compatible with surrounding uses and development. To the left, you can see the existing RES6. You can see it highlighted in yellow. To the right is the proposed RES9, not highlighted, just to provide clarity. The subject location is north of the river, west of I-75. You can see it on the west, on the left side. Zoomed in a little more on the right side. The applicant did a very good job of introducing to the site, so I'll just kind of cover a few extra items. Access to the property would be from the south along 21st, 21st Street Court East. Little history on the project, they mentioned it is within the UIRA. That was established around the turn of the century. That was right after agricultural operations on the site appear to have ceased, just going from aerial imagery. So the site has been vacant for some time. It's been zoned A1 since 1990, the Establishment of Land Development Code, and since the conplan was established in 89, it's been RES6. Just jumping into some of the, what the, the numbers mean, you know, the RES6 to the RES9 doesn't change any of the potential non-residential. They're still stuck with a maximum 150 square feet of potential non-residential. However, what this would allow for is high-density clustered residential. So that's the big change highlighted here. Potentially up to 127 dwelling units under the existing six dwelling units per general, or per gross area, or gross acre, excuse me. Up to 191 units at nine dwelling units per gross acre. Now, they do have the potential under a density bonus, under a mixed use or in a four-bowl housing project, to increase that density, potentially up to 20 dwelling units per gross acre. Obviously, they'd have to accommodate that. Just jumping into the, some of the property info, they mentioned it's within the activity node, the Palmetto Manatee UIRA. It's in the urban core. It's west of the FDAP and within the suburban neighborhoods, character vision area. It's just outside of the, well, excuse me, it's partially within the coastal planning area overlay that goes along that east property boundary that they mentioned. And it's outside of the urban service area, and it's not along an urban corridor. Jumping into nearby projects, the applicant had, had good information on that. I will kind of go past this quickly. If anybody wants me to go back to just speak to any of these, I'd be happy to. Jumping into compatibility concerns, low-density residential and suburban agricultural uses are surrounding the property to the east, industrial to the south. The LDC outlines requirements related to buffering between these different land uses. And that's something that obviously they're gonna have to work in, you know, in the future time when they Just jumping into some aerials, this is a view to the northeast. You can see in the front ground, the industrial kind of mix of uses. If we rotate, and now we're facing southeast, you can see the development. You mentioned how that's been not necessarily clustered, but appropriately utilizing open space areas. Zooming out a little, just facing to the southwest, you can see in the background how the transition occurs as you look towards the city Palmetto and the water. Then go back to the view to the northwest, you can see how it transitions to a little bit lower density as we go north. Population projections, the, no adverse population increase is anticipated, and the subject area is within County SubArea 1. Speaking of potential benefits, they, they generally align with supportive comprehensive plan policies related to allowing intensity and density to increase, especially within this urban core in the UIRA area. Potential concerns relate to how future development could occur if and when this is approved, and how it's properly mitigating for potential impacts on and off-site, and that there is a significant range of adjacent land uses. They touched on this, but this really is a mixture of uses in this area. Some of the mitigating factors, the applicant touched on that eastern boundary, you know, where they have that, where there's the existing canal and they'll have drainage. That is about a 40 to 50-foot separation. Obviously, project planning and, and design should incorporate mitigation techniques beyond spatial separation as necessary to alleviate potential impacts such as noise on the neighbors to the northwest and the east and the surrounding. Just lastly to mention, and we covered this a little, but it's important to clarify, a detailed analysis of capacity and anticipating impacts on public roadways, public facilities, utilities. Transportation will be required at the time a future development is proposed on-site. There have been some concerns related from the, from the public about that, so I wanted to touch on that. So in summary, the request appears to meet applicable, applicable policies from the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. Staff therefore respectfully request a recommendation from this board to provide to the Board of County Commissioners to either approve or deny Plan Amendment 2310 and Ordinance 2410. This concludes, concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? All right, we'll open the public comment portion of this hearing.
Staff?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Staff presentation. I'm, I'm sure we can keep it short.
Hi, good morning. Laura Gonzalez with Development Services Department, and I have been sworn. Okay, this is the presentation for the resoning application. The request is to resound from A1 to PDR, retaining the coastal planning area overlay. And the applicant is also seeking approval of a general development plan for a residential development of up to 191 residential units. And it's important to mention that this GDP is based on the requested future land use category RES9. This is the area that you have been, you have seen before. This is the, the property is 21 acres, and it is surrounded by...
We can do a brief one, right?
Okay. The future land use category was already discussed. This is the zoning map, and this is the general development plan. And the project, as I mentioned, consists of up to 191 units of variety of type of residential. And the general development plan contains the development standard for single-family detached, single-family semi-detached, single-family attached, and multifamily. There is an access plan on 21st Street Court East, and a neighborhood tie on 22nd Street East. The open space that is proposed exceeds the code requirements. And also, the plan includes a 20-foot roadway buffer along 21st Street Court East, and a 15-feet greenbelt buffer on the remaining lot lines. As was mentioned by the applicant, they are requesting a specific approval to allow the secondary means of access to be an emergency access only if multifamily use is proposed. This, restricting this access as emergency access only will provide the necessary protection and public safety for the future residents, and will also contribute to mitigate compatibility concerns between the potential multifamily development and the adjacent single-family subdivision. If the project is developed with different types of residential units, the interneighborhood tie will be at full access. Okay, positive aspects. The proposal consolidates the residential uses north of 21st Street Court East. Wetlands are preserved, and the proposed impacts are really limited to surface water, and it's a small area. An interneighbourhood tie is proposed west to the Second Street East, and public facilities are available to serve the development. And as I mentioned, open space exceeds code requirements. The GDP is the, is the, is this, the site plan is a GDP, and as such, it does not contain enough details on the development design. So it's difficult to imagine where the different type of units will be located. The roadway buffer is the minimum required by code, and no other development standard are proposed to provide, provide additional separation from the industrial uses to the south. Mitigating measures, multifamily building height is limited to three-story, and the project will comply with the building height compatibility, Section 401.5. Also, the project proposes buffer, buffer and setback to provide separation from the surrounding uses internally. But it's important that also at time of the preliminary and final site plan, the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposal is superior in design to the conventional site plans, and has to identify the proposal, proposed focal point in compliance with Section 402.7. Point D4. So with the proposed stipulation and specific approval, and related specific approval, we find the request to be consistent with the policies of the Comprehensive Plan and the applicable requirements of the Land Development Code, subject to the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment from RES6 to RES9. Also, at time of the final site plan and preliminary site plan, compliance with all of these requirements and applicable standard of the Land Development Code will be reviewed in detail. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point? Seeing no questions, thank you. We'll now open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. Any, any closing comments from staff? Applicant closing comments. I do have a question. We're not asking for, the applicant is not asking for any parking reductions, as we often see in multifamily. So if that were to happen later, it would be part of the FSP program, and then it wouldn't be just an administrative-type determination.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rutledge?
Yes, so in reading the environmental report, it lists some of these things as low probability to moderate. And I, I'm just curious, did they have any specific sightings of the crocodiles? Because that's an interesting thing. It says there are none here, but I've seen them. And I was just curious whether they had any other species of concern. Gopher tortoises I know about.
Sure.
The indigo snakes. All right. So I just, was there any concerns about the wildlife conditions here? It's kind of bitten surrounded, and the industrial is kind of, but I just wanted to know that they are certain their report is as accurate as it can be.
I'll let Carrie McNutt come up.
I thought you might.
Answer that.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carrie McNutt with Monarch Ecology Group. To answer your question, no, we didn't find any listed species on the property at all. I was out there on three different occasions, dealing with wetland delineations, listed species, and also had SwiftMud out on-site reviewing wetland lines, and no listed species were observed.
No storks? You didn't see the...
Nope, nope. The, the wetland on-site is really actually low-quality. It's heavily infested with Brazilian pepper, and then there's a little cattle pond. There was still cattle pond, cattle out there when I was out there. They're actually using the property, there's like a existing cattle access to an off-site property that they kind of go back and forth. So no, no, no wildlife, listed species were observed.
No eagles?
No.
Okay.
Did you happen to look at the wetland to the north at all, or just staring at it?
To the north, meaning off-site?
Yeah.
No, no. You know, I checked the, the perimeter on the north side to make sure there was no wetlands that came onto the property, but you know, technically, I'm not supposed to, you know, cross property boundaries.
Looked healthy? That wetland looked healthy from on-site?
There was a lot of Brazilian pepper right on the north property line, but I didn't go beyond that because...
On your side or their side?
Um, I didn't go beyond the property boundary.
But, so the Brazilian peppers didn't appear to be on your property? They appeared to...
Both, both. Yeah, kind of right along the fence line, which isn't, you know...
And you'll be removing those exotics as part of your process, or...
Yes, well, definitely within the property boundaries, and then, of course, in the wetland buffers, because that's part of the requirements for the county to do buffer restoration. So yes.
Would there be any reason to try and work the people in the north to remove the Brazilian peppers from their wetland while you're there?
Uh, that did not come up.
Well, I know. But since you're in there rutting around, might it be a good time to remove Brazilian peppers from a wetland adjacent to you?
Possibly. I guess that's...
As a good neighbor, I mean, you know.
That's not really up to me, but...
I know it's not up to you. That's why I'm staring at Mr. Rudisill.
I'll let him answer that question, then.
I'm just saying, you know, it might be the time to be a good neighbor and run and dig around. If you're in there removing them, and they're like two feet away, maybe just remove those two. Anything else for the applicant at this point? Anything else?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for playing. Chair, let me take a motion. We have a motion to approve and a second. We may go ahead and vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Four, that's for item number five. Now we'll need a motion In the old days, when it was verbal, it was a lot quicker. We have a motion to approve and a second. We may go ahead and register our vote. Motion also panisses unanimously. That ends our public hearing agenda. We, we also will open up briefly, if there's anyone in the public that would like to come forward and talk to us about any future agenda items before, future agenda items before we close our meeting today. Seeing no one come forward, any Commissioner comments to close? our meeting today. Seeing no one come forward, any Commissioner comments to close the day out?
I just want to welcome the new Commissioners. Glad to have you, Anne. Not so old Commissioners, right?
Anything from staff before we close? We're adjourned.